Hold order of the brick session for City of East Grand Forks, Tuesday, November 28, 2017 is now five o'clock. The city clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel?
Here.
Council Members Clarence Fetter?
Here.
Mike Prochusdinsky?
Here.
Tim Riappel?
Here.
Henry Twieton?
Mr. President.
President.
This is term quorum number one, Lutheran Social Services Site Use Agreement. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We look at this every year and what we're... Each year we look at to see if really anything has changed, if we have any other options or anything for the senior dining out there at the senior center. And the deal that we have with Lutheran Social Services is really the best deal that we have, so I guess with reviewing that, which is our recommendation, that the agreement be renewed for one more year, starting, I believe, it's January 9th or something, it's right at the first of the year, and we'll look at it again next year. So if that is the case, we would put it on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Anybody have any questions for him? See none, thank you, sir. Number two, Northland College Non-Exclusive Use Agreement. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. This one was postponed. There was some discussion about a request from Trans Systems that they might want to use that site out there that Northland is using right now. We don't know if they have found another site or whatever, but they have not been in contact with Northland for several months. So I guess with that, we wouldn't be looking at making any changes to the agreement based on any potential use from Trans Systems, since we really have not heard anything from them lately on that, and I have not heard any comments from the businesses out there as well. So unless there's any questions or concern, this would be something then that we would put on the consent agenda as well for approval for another year.
Anybody have any questions? See none, thank you, sir. Discussion on 2018 Budget, Mr. Murphy and Ms. Anderson.
I'm going to let Carla start with this.
Okay, so on the packet that you, I guess the information you got in the packet, we have tweaked it some, and so I emailed you them today, or otherwise they're, the new ones are on the screen. So I guess we're looking for direction on where we want the levy to be at. I know we had, you know, started at 10 percent. We have the truth in taxation for the properties at 10 percent. I know that the mayor had spoke with me that he looking at more at eight and a half percent, and so we put some new numbers in at the 10 percent. Here is the page, so the revenue hasn't changed. What the expenses are, and actually the mayor asked me to break down public safety into police, fire, and other public safety, which is building inspections and traffic management. So I did that on the new document, the one up here and the one I emailed you, and we made a couple adjustments in the capital outlay, and that is on this next page here. So we took out actually the radar and ATV, the car video, we got a better pricing, which is 10,000 more than what we had budgeted for to start with.
Is it a more accurate pricing?
Yes. Just a second, I'm gonna kind of cut out a little here. Fire, we took out suburban. They did get a truck from Enbridge right now, and the fire truck that they're having built will have a place to put in a board, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Public Works, we didn't make any adjustments. The fleet mower is part of the process that we have for the mowers in the summer, and we're replacing them in a three-year cycle. Street repairs, we keep at 250 typically every year. Parks, we took out playground equipment. Actually, it was wrong on the first form you got, the 30,000 was supposed to be for the edging, and it was 10,000 for equipment. So we took out 10,000 for equipment. The fencing, we made adjustment for Stiles Park and Itz Williams, so there, it's 28 instead of 22 just for the fencing. The edgers stayed in, the swimming pool entrance stayed in, and then the tool cat, the broom and the blower that we have will not fit on the tool, this new tool cat, and so we threw those in, and then we took out the three-quarter ton pickup. Then we get down to the transfers, and this is projects. Typically, we try to keep in about 30, 34,000 in capital projects, that's what we've had for the last couple of years. When we went through the 2018 AJ1 improvements, which we did actually in July, it's going to be federal dollars, and then there's a match, which we, I had estimated to come out of our state aid maintenance, and the remaining was 131,000 that we needed to cover. So Steve Emery is actually checking to see with the state, because since they are state aid roads, we can probably use state aid construction dollars, which they don't give to us every year, they give us maintenance dollars, which we put in the 209, the fund, 209 State Aid Maintenance Fund. So he's checking to see how much we can get to cover that, and if we can get most of it, then we won't need to take it out of our state aid maintenance fund, 209, and then we can have, save some money on that 131,000. Senior Center Parking, we have a better estimate now that they took those borings in that, and to replace the parking and do some correct drainage, we're looking at 88,000. The Point of Woods Street that we agreed on last year, which will be completed next year, is 25,000, and then the Kennedy Bridge, there's a connection trail from the actual bridge to the bike trail, is estimated at 33,000. And that's just the construction costs. The MnDOT is picking up all the soft costs for that. And then the water and light, that contra capital, that is actually, we just put that in as a revenue and an expense, and it all depends on streetlights, how many streetlights they replace and such. So that's just a watch. So that total, actually, the 981, 425 would equal the capital outlay through other expenditures. So now if we go to the eight and a half percent, we are actually short, short $33,000, and that would be 20,000 to put in that fund balance. So I guess what we're looking from you is where do you want the levy to be? Is it at 10 percent? Is it eight and a half? Is it a different number? And then we can tweak the numbers accordingly. Questions, comments?
Mayor Gander.
In case anyone is curious why I raised the possibility, and by no means is this me saying I'll veto anything other than something, because this is just a conversation, and every one of us has a perfectly good brain to bring to this discussion. But if you're curious where I came with the possibility of changing from a 10 percent gross levy increase to an eight and a half percent, it is when we received the information from our finance director as to what a 10 percent levy increase would do to the average homeowner, it would show up as 7 percent or a little higher. And for myself, I was always hoping to keep it in the five range as an increase for the average homeowner, five or less. And so when the increase to the homeowners came a little higher than I hope, I think we all would have expected with a 10 percent levy increase, that's what at least made me want to consider bringing it back down to eight and a half percent. The city is running right now in a lean fashion, and if we collectively decide that eight and a half percent is too deep a cut, that it really does hamper our ability to provide the services that the people would want us to provide, I'm receptive to leaving it at 10. So that's for conversation only, okay?
Anybody have any questions for Carla at this time? Henry?
I'd just like to make a comment. This past year, we've took out some concrete by the abandoned transformer bank, and that, there's a number of pieces there have been taken out. I had Mr. Stordahl, we took a look at it. The budget shows street repairs normally 250. I'd like to see that finished this year, because it affects a number of people. That street runs into the Sunshine Terrace, and it'll take care of the Eagles, and it'll finish off the Legion. And if we cut that from 250 to 125, I think we could do it. Mr. Stordahl's gonna get prices. And then I'd like to make one more comment. There's a piece by Christ the King Church that should be done next year, because they've done the underground, and that's the entrance to a number of things there, new homes, it's near the church, and it's been the policy that for many years that we try to take care of streets, give them priority around public buildings, schools, and churches. So looking ahead, why, if we do both of those, we've done some of the situations that have the greatest needs. And there was a meeting with Mr. Stordahl last, this year, a couple of meetings with some of the officers of the Legion, so they're well aware of it.
You want to address any of those, Mr. Stordahl?
Or I can address them too. The one by, go ahead, Jason. The 20th and by Christ the King is in the budget. We had to do sewer repairs there, so the sewer repairs were done, the gravel or whatever is there has to sit for a year, and it will come out of the sewage fund, the repaired concrete.
Some of the areas, other areas that Mr. Twieton was talking about, we went and took a look at them today. I let him know that we could get an estimate on some of those areas for some cracked ceiling, possibly some panel replacement, and there's a few other areas in town too that have to be, have to be looked at as far as potential projects for next year. So I don't know, I don't know what the total cost of all of them will be at this point, but...
Moving that from 250 to 125 is not gonna work, is it?
I don't think so.
Thanks, just a quick point, a couple quick questions, just for my own information. The 18 AJ1 is which project again?
There's like four different options on it, that are on the state, on the federal state aid, street improvement.
So that's basically matching for?
That's a 20 percent soft cost. So it's a multi-use trail on Highway 2?
Okay, it's not?
Yes, yes.
Right. And then the Point of Woods project is which?
That's, that's just the...
That's the, okay. And then chief, is, you guys currently have two SUVs?
We have four SUVs on this one. These SUVs have replaced the 2013 and the 2014, and 13 is actually been rebuilt.
Carla?
Could I, I just want to make another comment. So on that right side of this page where the capital, I just want to make sure everybody knew that these are central equipment payments, so there's other equipment that departments are getting. Typically, the fire, when they get equipment, it's very large, and so we pay for it over many years, usually typically nine years, and so I'd put those on the side so that you know that there are other, is equipment that we are actually paying off, but that actually comes out of the top section on this page as a payment. So we're basically having a loan to ourselves.
Mr. Grassel.
So we cut the radar and the ATV, we got rid of $10,000 in playground equipment, we added 6,000 to fencing, got rid of 45,000 in a pickup, added 88,000 for the parking lot, and 33,000 for the rail connection?
Correct, and yeah, the senior center parking went from 31 to 88. I guess the other thing that happened is that when we first got the printout here, it was only $10,000, and Terry had made adjustments, because Public Works, now we have three new employees in different positions, so we have a savings there, so that's where we picked up the 24,000 from last Wednesday till Monday.
So I guess my question would be, would you import this that tool cat?
When we asked parks, they, they said the tool cat instead of the pickup, but you can answer to it, Reed, please.
Its biggest use for us would really be in the winter months as a tool for snow removal. The toros that we're currently using for blowers or sweepers out on the trails, on the sidewalks, those kinds of things are both in the area of 20-plus years old, and when they break down, it's just a matter of if our mechanics can put them back together themselves with spare parts they have on the shelves. There are no parts that you can purchase for them. One of the, we have two of those, one of them was broke down this summer, because it is used as a mower as well, and it was just a matter of, you know, fortunately, they were able to piece it back together, but every time they work on it, Kevin or Ronnie give us the, we gotta do something different about these, because we don't know if, how long we'll be able to keep fixing them. So that, we could, we'd certainly make use of it all year round, but that would be, it's big, biggest asset to us.
So how much time, how much percentage of the time would be used on the maintenance of those trails? If you, just a rough estimate?
Percentage of the tool cats' use?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Just rough estimate, I'd say probably 60 to 70 percent of its use, but that's, that'd be a big guess.
We also use it on sidewalks, right?
Correct, yeah. Basically, snow removal would be safe sidewalks, downtown sidewalks, blowing snow off the outdoor rings.
And then the trail system.
And the whole trail system, yeah. In the summer, it would attach, it would be an attachment for our stump grinder and our claw that we got last year to be able to grind stumps and use streets. We can use our skid steer for that as well, but it'd give us another tool, we could have the bucket on the skid steer and still have the stump grinder hacked up to the tool cat to be able to do that work.
Just trying to give the... What's one of yous in that maintenance, rail maintenance fee thing?
When we looked, talked about that in the past, we tried to buy equipment out of there, and that was considered not part of...
Maintenance?
Yes. It was only for basically the infrastructure. We did have that conversation a few years back. And we actually are in the hole for another year, because we, we overspent and got a better price to do more trail systems, so we can't buy anything out of the trail system in 2018, because we need to reimburse it from the improvement we did this year.
How much is that?
We spent, I believe, 155, but it should recoup itself by either the end of 2018.
So 155 will go back in there?
No, we get like 46,000 years, excuse me. Sorry.
I think, just thinking off the top of my head, I think that we are going to be about 31 in the hole, that it would need to pay itself back in 2018. So by the end of 2018, that account will be back to, you know, roughly 14, 15,000 dollars.
Okay. My question I have, Ducktail, if you have, go ahead.
So I guess, I'm going back through this process, if we're using, if we're using this for maintenance, and we use, we use a snow plow, we use a loader, we use a whatever to move snow in the winter for maintenance on our streets, why can't we use that, why can't in the future, look at that for, as a budget for part of some of that money? I just want to start having some people think about that.
Mark?
Thank you. I guess, conceptually, I'm not opposed to doing that, but it's kind of like, you still gotta go out and get the revenue, because the number that we came up with, or that number, was based on repairing the trails, the blacktop trails, and that's how we calculated it. We, it wasn't a perfect, we're not going to charge 1.03 dollars or whatever, but we did a rough number. We know we have this many miles, this is the lifetime, this is the average cost per foot, we calculated, backed it out, and made sense to that. If we want to start adding equipment, you kind of gotta adjust that number, otherwise you're just, and otherwise you're not paying for it, you know what I mean?
Well, we just, I think we need to then take a different look at that piece.
And if that's how you want to do it, that's fine.
We're going through snowmowers and tool cats on that trail, and we're using them for, I think we need to figure out a way how to pay for it on this trail.
But it's probably not gonna be...
And that is speaking across country and that's it.
But it's probably not just going to be used for snowblowing, and, I mean, so, like I said, I'm fine if someone wants to put together that calculus and say, this is all the equipment we want to do, back that number in and raise that rate, I guess I'm not opposed to that, but that wasn't, that wasn't part of the calculation when we did it, so...
Just to back up what Mr. Dimerz is saying, is those trails are coming up on 20 years old now, and that fee that we impose to overlay those trails as they wear out, you know, and, you know, they're asphalt trails built along a riverbank. If you don't, if you don't overlay those, over time, they're just going to deteriorate, the weeds will grow up, and we're barely putting enough aside to keep up with that. We're not putting enough in it. So if you start adding additional responsibilities for that fund, equipment or what have you, Mr. Dimerz says, you better increase the source of revenue that you're, that you're using to do it, because millions of dollars have been invested in those trails, and no one would argue that it's not a great asset and attraction for all of the, all of the things in the greenway. And if you let them decay, you'll just squander that millions and millions of dollars of investment. So I'm fine if you want to, if you want to start spending that money on other things besides maintaining the trails in a, in a way that, that they don't start decaying, you just gotta find a new or additional revenue to put into that fund, so that was my discussion. My discussion wasn't to take the money and not overlay, not let millions of dollars go away. My discussion was to find a different way to buy equipment. I never said we're not going to fix the trails.
Okay. Mark?
And I, thank you. I guess, I'd add too, is the reason it was done that way is because no, there was a certain impediment to generating that type of fund in our, if, if we were able to raise the property tax to do it and just dedicate X amount to this every year, I think that would have been the approach. So I know there's, instead of, not trying to rip off a can of worms or open up a can of worms right here, but, I mean, if you wanted, I would be in favor of even pulling that fund out of a fee schedule and, you know, paying for it through property tax, or next time we come around on a sales tax, you can designate a quarter cent or something, because that, those type of things make more sense to me than the fee, but at the time, that was the only viable route to start paying for those things. So like I said, I'm plenty secure with going forward and reconfiguring, rethinking how we raise that fund, but also be, we have to cognizant that you still gotta get the money, you still gotta pay for the stuff, so, but yeah, I'm fine with it.
I think that's where Mr. Grassel was going, to find out if, what year did we, was that, all that done to figure out?
2009, maybe?
So 2009, 2017, a lot of things changed, a lot of things needing to be looked at, discussed. I think looking at that and finding ways to do it is probably a good thing to do. You can always look at improving ourselves and improving the city and proving how we do things and pay for things, so I mean, it's a good discussion to start. Mr. Twieton, did you have something? Did you have something on that?
Well, the only thing I was going to say is that basically, there's one thing we all recognize, the needs are great, it's a question of getting funding and priorities. And what we're actually doing, we've got a program incrementally of protecting, first of all, protecting the subject, next to, also to maintain it. And it's, today, it just appears to me where you want to put your priority. I, frankly, I think the city's done a pretty good job on it, compared to some communities, why, I think we're, we're rating a couple of pluses.
Carla?
I'd just like to comment that we have in the budget, out of the Building Maintenance Fund, 60,000 for our park and rec study, which the trails would be part of, which would include ways to finance it and costs and such.
Okay, good, thank you. One question I do have, I'll go to the mayor after that, and I think we brought it up last year, I think when this was on here also, and discussion, I don't think we really got into it, what part of shared equipment, let's say Public Works and Parks and Rec, because A, Parks and Rec doesn't have, and Public Works does have a tool cat, right? Correct?
Correct.
And with your equipment that you have, that, what don't you use in the wintertime that they could use for the trails? Is there anything?
We pretty much use everything. We have a mower on our tool cat, and we use it to blow up mailboxes and then all the workstation and stuff like that, so, not to say there's any downtime where they could use it, anytime we're not using it, they could, but we, in snow events, we use it a lot, and that's kind of the similar events where they would use it also, so...
No, I'm just wondering, you know, shared equipment, there's cost savings there for everyone.
Yep. And we did make use of it last winter on a few occasions, but that was what we found, really, it kind of, a little bit comes back to the conversation of the service and what kind of timeframe we want with it, is in many cases, it was two or three days later that we'd be able to get use of the tool cat when Public Works is done with their responsibility, and then we'd be able to take it and make use of it. So there are times, like Jason said, that it's available, but it doesn't meet the standard of service that I guess we're trying to accomplish in that too.
Mayor?
One thing that's good about local government is we can hear from people. How do we serve you the best, people? Because on the one hand, good service is freedom from taxation, and on the other hand, good service is providing a service that you all prefer, that you want to have, be it the senior center, the library, all the park activities and recreation in the greenway and all of that, and of course, foundationally, public safety, public works and all of that. And so please, we want your feedback, if anyone's going to watch this on the YouTube channel, whatever it might be, and help to guide us. Is it A, you know what, I see the value of services that we receive, if it's going to be that little bit higher tax increase, we want those services, or B... Or B, you know what, we'd really rather see a little bit of a savings on our tax bill, find a way to do it. Um, I did confide in, in Carla, and thank you for your time this past week to talk about the budget. I, um, I do have a, a pretty strong conviction, and I think we all do. I'm not saying I'm alone in this. We all put a high emphasis, a top priority in public safety, and, and all from there. And I guess I'm gonna ask, I think I know the answer. What year is our Suburban in the fire department?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four Suburban. I know it's been well maintained and, and well kept and well taken care of, and yet, all these assets have a, a lifespan. And I know you've brought that back to the council. This is my first year in the budgeting process, but I know it's not the first year that the Suburban has been proposed inside that fire department. If there's a way to do that, we're gonna wanna do that now or in the very near future. Um, to the question of the ATV in the police department, how much use would that get? How many hours do you think an ATV would, would be in use in a, in a one-year period inside our police department?
It's hard to say at this point in time. Part of that would be put on the staffing levels. Who would like to be able to actually do some proactive controls and even feel reacted. Um, but that's, we have to be able to do it. This past year with our limited staffing, we haven't done bike control like we do. But if we can keep our staffing at full strength like we are right now, um, I think we'd be able at least to do a few hours a week minimum. Uh, and then of course, being able to react when there is an actual incident down there. That's, I guess, an emergency situation is what we're spending. It would be most valuable.
In the last year, let's say, if you had an emergency situation that called for an ATV, have you been able to get your hands on one any other way?
The fire department does have one. Um, oftentimes, they would be responding to those same sort of incidents. Um, I guess I'm not, the true number of those emergencies is, is relatively small in most years. You're probably talking a handful of incidents at the most. Um, but if you're that person down there during that incident, it's, suddenly it becomes priceless.
Mr. Murphy?
Carla, I just have a question for you here on this. Um, so, the sheet that you passed out with the, tonight with the, um, the new capital numbers, the revised capital numbers?
Yes.
So if that was compared to, um, the, our, the proposed two thousand and eighteen budget at ten percent, what's the bottom line on that?
So, at ten percent right now, we would have, um, excess of revenue over expenses of thirty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars left. And that is with a twenty percent addition into the fund balance that the mayor had asked for.
Twenty thousand, right?
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, the twenty thousand.
Not twenty percent.
Excuse me. And then, um, at the eight and a half percent, we would actually have expenditures over revenue of thirty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars. And if, you know, you chose at eight and a half percent, we would go back to department heads or whatever and figure out where we could cut that. So it's a matter of where you want the levy at.
Mr. President, if I may, I'll just make my one spiel here. Um, now that the, the council has spoken this. The one thing I, I would like to have the council keep in mind while they weigh this and, and make this very important and, and very tough decision on, on what to do with the budget. It's, it's something that councils all over the state have to look at, and you have to weigh your, what your citizens want and what your citizens need. And it's, it's a, it's a difficult position to be put in, and you, you, um, you have to answer to the voters and, and I, I guess one thing I would say is that, uh, just to keep in mind that, um, we've had some discussion throughout this last year as far as what we wanna see in the future, and what we want to add in the future, potentially, or things that we might need to attack and, uh, as we move on. Um, one of them being this, either we've got the Civic Center parking lot, we've got, um, we've had quite a bit of discussion on our assessment policy, um, for our road reconstructions, how we're gonna do that, uh, the cost of that. When we do do repairs, whether we're, the city's going to take over a portion of that. If we get to the point where what we're charging or assessing back to the, the citizens is not sustainable, um, that is something we're gonna have to take a look at here as well. Um, and, so, if, if we do do that route, that's gonna be all in, that'll be things that are gonna impact our levy. So I guess, my recommendation would be that we would stay at the, at the ten percent, and then move with the, um, you know, the, if that helps us with our fund balance, um, a little bit of extra on that. If we don't, it's, and we do do go that route, it's more to make up in, in future years. So, that's my spiel.
Carla did point out, if you go to your summary sheet, where you see eighteen AJ1, that is spending on, uh, street project of one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of the local share. And she persuaded me that that fits into my hundred thousand that I wanted to set aside for future infrastructure costs, even though we're gonna spend it in that year. It's still a big commitment. It's over a hundred thousand dollar commitment, local share, infrastructure. So it at least preserves the spirit of, of me wanting to say, let's plan ahead for our local share of street projects. It's just not as far into the future as I would've hoped.
Well, I guess, if, if I may, if we, as we move forward onto that though, if, you know, say in nineteen, we don't have a project where we have that local share on, that is something then, that is, could be built into the, and we could maintain that amount, and we could start using that to fund those items.
I would, um, if, if we're leaning toward ten, and again, I, I'd like to hear some feedback from folks in our community. Um, of that thirty-four, seven, forty-eight on the bottom line, that, that we come out to the good, uh, maybe we could look back on, um, either a Suburban or an ATV or some combination thereof.
Any thoughts on that at all? What are you suggesting? Clarence?
Chief, how many miles do you have in your Suburban?
I believe there's about a hundred and twenty thousand on that.
Where's our fund balance gonna be, Carla, at the end of the year?
Uh, well, right now, we're, we're shooting for like forty-one percent, forty-two. And I know we, Moody's just put something out, um, it's not complete, that I will forward to you. It's a little excerpt that they put on each, uh, city, and they're talking how we're at like forty-one percent also. And I think we talked about between forty and forty-five. And I know there was discussion that sometimes if you get more than that forty-five, it, it doesn't look good either. So, just trying to balance it in between there.
With the ten percent, we're putting twenty thousand towards the fund balance and still having an extra thirty-four thousand. So we're actually putting fifty-four thousand in? So if we went nine and a quarter percent, would that get us to zero then?
I'm, I like your thinking. I'm all for lower taxes if we can do it.
You could put, he could buy a Suburban then.
How much was it, Suburban again?
That was, uh-
Fifty-two, three, five.
And, and you gotta always, when we're having this conversation, let's really be thankful that right in this moment, we can cover eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven in lost local government aid. That is revenue lost this year from last, um, as a reduction in the dollars from the state. And, and we're able to absorb that and get down to this bottom line. I'm very thankful to be in that, in that place.
Samuel, excuse me, anybody else have anything to add on the budget discussion? Chief Fedlin?
Just, since it was brought up, uh, our SEDs that were less year in place, um, I did send a text to our country sergeant and asked him current mileage on the newer of those two vehicles. He did, has almost a hundred and thirty-eight thousand miles on them.
Um, one last thought also, and Chief and I discussed this maybe a few months ago and not since. Our police department operates on a rotation of replacing two vehicles one year, two vehicles one year, and one on the third. I would support an effort to maintain their funding more continuous, so that on the year where we're doing one vehicle, that would be the year to focus more on the radar or the ATV, whatever it may be, from a budgetary standpoint, to have a more consistent year-to-year and use that, that one vehicle a year to, to supplement other equipment that they might need. I'd sure support that.
Anything else, Carla?
Does this budget incorporate the sales tax that we're initiating in January first?
No, that is, that'll be in a separate fund. So, there could be an adjustment on the swimming pool interest.
Yep.
So that would be the twenty thousand there.
Twenty-one, two.
Yeah, you know, that, um, we should be able to pay that out of the fund. I just have to make sure that we can do that. But that would be an additional twenty. I left it in there just because it doesn't hurt to have extra. And we're still working on the pool. So there will be some more expenses with the pool. We have to make sure that we don't go over the amount that the citizens voted on to pay for the sales tax.
And we, it, we may have, well, we're gonna have to upfront that portion this spring. And then, we'll recover it back in.
Hopefully.
We're gonna, we have, I, I guess, we have a strong case. You never know, but we have a very strong case.
We've also looked at the option of, uh, with, with building this rescue engine, of being able to slip a patient in there and, and having a rescue truck for backup of the possibility of going to a four-row pickup, you know, transporting people, you know, which, uh, we've discussed with David and Carla, savings of probably, maybe ten thousand dollars on that too.
In lieu of a, of a Suburban?
In lieu, yeah.
Yep. That, that brings it closer again.
Mark?
Thank you. Um, this gives us a pretty good picture of where we're at. We just got our truth and taxation stuff, so people should, like the mayor said, is, people should have an idea. We're also responsible for Water Night's budget. Do we have a sense in what people are gonna be facing on top of, or in spite of what we're doing?
I believe the electric rate is like at one percent. I should, probably shouldn't quote it. And the water, I think, is going up in usage at like one point two-five or something.
The water rate is going up one point two-five percent? And the electric rate is going up?
I think together, it's only like two percent. It, it varies because some of the, uh, the industrial rate is going up, but the resident, it's going, but a different rate is the residential, so.
Are we gonna get a real doll, I mean, we asked for the same thing with property tax. Are we gonna get a real dollar impact for both commercial and residential?
I can email that to you or put it in the box. I know that they brought that to the last meeting.
They did. I, I thought maybe I had it in with my stuff here, but I didn't.
To their last meeting.
Yes, but I don't have new documentation of how it affects their budget, but, but we will get those to you.
And then, what they plan to do with that extra revenue, I guess would be interesting.
I'm not aware of anything out of the ordinary. They do have planned projects every year. They have planned, planned replacement of water lines every year. Um, nothing out of the ordinary, ordinary that I'm aware of, so. But I will, we'll get you the rates.
Not aware of anything other than their normal replacement, those type of things, their water line replacements, that kind of stuff. Nothing that I'm aware of either.
Does anybody else have anything regarding the budget?
Not for this part of it, but I do have one item that I would like to, budget related, but should not take long.
Anything else on the budget? Okay, Mr. Murphy, you have something else to say?
Uh, yes, I actually did receive a, um, a response back from the ENR yesterday. And I was hoping to bring this up for you, as far as the, the, um, storage shed out there by fire station number two. Um, they have run it through their portion. They said that they are willing to make a payment, um, on that, um, for that. But they said that the highest that they could go, and this would be a twelve-month deal, even though they're not using it in the summer, would be thirty dollars a month. Oh, yeah.
So what other options do they have?
I'm not sure what other options they would have. That's as far as they, as far as they can go. I did go out there and tour that site with Reed here, um, last week. Right now, they've got those, those two, what are they, gator type things or something?
They have a John Deere gator and a Polaris Ranger.
Yeah, they have those two in there. They have a trailer in there. And they have some tables and in things, some furniture type things out there.
Park benches, picnic tables, miscellaneous tools.
So, I guess they could theoretically store that stuff outside. Um, they probably would wanna store the trailer and the, those two gator type things outside. Um, but they went on to a spiel about how they, we are in a partnership with them, and we're working together in this, in that they do not have the wherewithal. They understand that we, we'd wanna be paid for that over the most that they could do would be that thirty dollars a month. So that's what we're asking.
I agree with the partnership aspect. And, I mean, if we step back and look at the total of the good that that partnership has brought and will bring to our community, maybe they're just hamstrung for being able to pay rent for structures like that. You know, that may just be the case. Um, I sure, I don't think we should take it necessarily as a slap in the face, but only to say, as, from a funding standpoint, inside their agency, they don't have the ability to pay for that sort of thing. It's way, it's worth, I had the same idea, Clarence, I saw your, your email. At least four hundred dollars a month, or on up from there. That would be my best guess. And you quoted some good numbers. I did the math, and it came, I think, a little higher than that even. So, but, it is a partnership.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, we could push him on that, but what, what they indicated to me is if we're talking four hundred a month or something like that, they would, at that point, then have to either haul it somewhere and store it off-site or leave it outside. Is that true or not? Whether that's, that's what they told me.
Carla?
And just a reminder that we do get charged for services that, like, you know, cities do for their payments or whatever. So, you know, that comes off the top before we give our expenses, and then they split the revenue in half. And there is revenue to split, so, just to, just as a reminder.
Thanks, Mr. Murphy, on that. I don't know if you want direction or if you want something else on it.
I guess, is this something around that range? Is that something that we're willing to consider? Or are we gonna say that's, next year, you're gonna have to take it out?
It's everybody's wishes. Mr. Fedder?
Carlos' point, I mean, if we charge them four hundred dollars a month, it's an expense to the state recreation area, decreases the revenue we split, but now we're not splitting that four hundred with them, we're getting the whole four hundred for us. They got a better spot for it? Take it somewhere else?
Would you be able to rent that structure to somebody else at that location?
For that price, sure. I'm sure there'd be tons of people looking for it. And that's the point, is, yes, we're partnering with them, but we also partner with a lot of people. We partner with, or potentially partner with people that live within our city. We live, you know, with county people, with state people, or Grand Forks people, businesses. And if we skew that partnership in one way, it kind of creates an imbalance on other partnerships. So, I get your comments, I, I, and I get theirs, yeah, we're trying to do something beneficial. But partnership is usually mutually beneficial, and it's, it kind of, you, you gotta find the, the happy medium. Now, that's a two thousand square foot building. They only use half- the, the happy medium. No, that's a two thousand square foot building, they only use half, so it's a thousand square foot. I mean, if you went to a low number of three dollars a square foot, you're talking three thousand dollars a year, they only use it half a year, you're talking fifteen hundred dollars, so now you're talking a little over a hundred bucks a month. So, it's not like you're talking four hundred dollars a month unless, you know, unless that's what they want. But I don't think that's what they want. So, I would say a hundred and fifty bucks a month year round is, would be, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month year round is, would be the going rate. Now, could you give a discount? I'd be willing to find some discount, but I don't, I don't know. I mean, they could try their, look at the store-alls in town, and I would bet they're closer, if not higher, than what I, what I said, you know, because that's, that's pretty, pretty dirt cheap, you know, cold storage.
Would the DNR be able to show an offset, you know what, we can't pay for space rental, but we can do this as, as a direct offset?
An offset, you mean as far as like a service or something?
Yep, something that they provide in kind back, because they know they're not paying a fair price for that storage.
I don't know, I'm going to put Reed on the spot here. Reed, if you have anything, Catherine, is there anything you could think of off the top of your head that?
They want to clean the trailheads for us or something?
I don't, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, in that way, in kind offset.
Got a rack in my brain on that, too. I-
It was anything you could think about and talk to them.
In light of that thought, though, the DNR contract is up this year as well, so we're negotiating, and that conversation has to be had this winter, spring, even the next season. So, there's an opportunity to have that conversation as well.
Mike, do you have something, sir?
Yeah, I suggest we charge them the same rent we charge Northland for the use of the parking lot.
My point is, there's a double standard here. We're, we're perfectly willing to give an asset away to one institution, but we're haggling with another one over, there you go.
It's not apples to apples, so, it's total baloney.
Okay, it's apples to apples.
It's not. Anybody else have anything? I'll remind everybody that Linda at Senior Center is retiring, they're going to have a open house on December sixth from two to four-thirty. So, let everybody know that. Anybody else have anything? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry. Do we move forward with ten percent so they can vote on it next week, or what are we doing, I guess is the question?
Just a reminder, public, next week's meeting is at six o'clock, we're holding the public hearing. It was, it was put in the paper and it's posted, so, meeting next week again at six o'clock. We can prepare resolutions for the ten percent, you guys can make changes you have before our meetings. And if you don't want to vote on it next week, you can continue it until the ninth week as well, so.
So, is everybody okay with moving forth on the ten percent for now, and then we can discuss it next meeting? Fine? Okay, sounds good. Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
By Tweedon. Second by Grassl, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carried, meeting is adjourned.
Sure.